Okay.
I'm gonna call the January meeting of the West Dakota Water Development District into order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, the admin would like to read the roll of the current members that have not been sworn in yet.
Okay, roll call for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Bochy?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Five is vacant. Young? Mack?
Here.
Care?
Here.
Who did I miss?
Uh, Driscoll and McGregor.
Sorry, I made out a new sheet here and I-
You got me. Oh, you did?
Yep. McGregor? Present. Okay, we have seven present. We have a quorum. One vacant, one absent.
So moving to Agenda Item Three is the approval of the agenda. Nothing can be moved on unless the agenda has been approved. Is there an approval of the agenda as presented?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Driscoll. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McGregor. We'll give Dan a second to quick type that down.
Thank you.
Okay. We move to Item Number Four, to disaffirming of the newly elected Director. Yes. Oh, I did not do that. I apologize. With the motion to approve the agenda, uh, motion by Driscoll, seconded by McGregor, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Same side. Uh, motion is approved. Okay, now, number four, to swear in the newly elected Director.
Maybe Craig can put his phone on mute?
Yep. Craig, you can mute for, for a minute on this one.
Okay.
Should we go alphabetically here or do you wanna just find the people?
So Peggy has volunteered to be our notary.
I tried to pay her off with a dozen eggs, but she didn't sign my name.
No, I'll pay for those great eggs, so.
Thank you.
So if you want to start alphabetical, we'll all go with Roy.
Hey, I, Roy E. Bochy of Directory Area Two, have, having been elected as a member of the Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of South Dakota. I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability perform all the duties of my said office of the Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, Director, Area Two, and render a true account of all money, credits, accounts, and property of any kind that shall come into my hands as such officer, and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
I can't, I watched you sign it. So why don't we do all of them then, then I'll notarize them all at one time?
Okay. I, Mark Klein, of Director, Area Eight, having been elected as a member of the Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of South Dakota. I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability perform all duties of the said office of Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, Director, Area Eight, and render a true account of all money, credits, accounts, and property of any kind that shall come into my hands as such officer, and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
I, William Young, of Director, Area Six, having been elected as a member of the Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of South Dakota. I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability perform all of the duties of my said office of Board of Directors of the West Dakota Water Development District, Director, Area Six, and render a true account of all money, credits, accounts, and property of any kind that shall come into my hands as such officer, and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
So while Peggy is doing that, I'll need a W nine. I, I got one already from the new directors. If you got it done, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. And since you guys are new, here's a fun pack. Some of the laws in there are opposite, they've changed, so it's not necessarily up to date, but they're gonna do some more changes, so I didn't bother to update them. You can look on the South Dakota site, Secretary of State site for, um, the current ones.
Okay.
Still old school?
Oh. How else would you do it?
Oh, some people just have a stamp, you know, like a stamp. I have an old impression thing. I've had it for forty years, so.
Well, we like, we like the traditional here. So thank you, Peggy. You're welcome to hang around this kind of morning today.
We pair that water.
Yeah.
Do you need a police escort with those eggs?
Oh, no, I already got them. No, those are just the-
Oh, those are the empties.
The refill containers. They're secret service.
Someday that'll be currency.
Yeah, the president, they said they're gonna go up to about twenty dollars a dozen here.
Oh, really?
I, I bought some at Thrift Center late last week. Eighteen eggs was almost eleven dollars. Bird flu, latest.
Unfortunately, I don't eat eggs.
No, I've got Dan. He didn't have any whipping last week at our meeting, so. You gonna say one good one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anytime. And if anybody ever needs anything, notarized, call me at Motion Unlimited Museum out on South Highway Seventy, and I, I do not charge.
Okay, well, thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, so Item Five is the conflict of interest. If any of the board members have a conflict of interest on the agenda, please notify if there is a conflict of interest. I am not hearing any, so we can move on. Okay. Item Six is the election of officers. Per codified law, forty-six A dash three B dash eleven. And in the packet, it does explain how the officers are, are, how the officers are needed for the board. And that on the first, first meeting in January each year, uh, we designate the officers. Uh, Dan, do you want to, so let's, does anybody want me to read the, the Agenda Item Six completely, or? Okay. Uh, the first election of officers would be the Chairperson. It is for a one-year term, and it must be a Director. Uh, opening up, are there any nominations? Yes, Dan?
Well, I think, uh, our Vice Chair, Thomas Mack, would be a, a solid choice to step up into the Chair position that's been vacated by Director Birkey, who served us very well for probably six years. Has it been six, have you eight years?
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll, I'll nominate Director Mack.
I'll second that, except for the comments about Director Birkey.
Uh, any other nominations for Chair of the West Dakota Water Development Board? Not hearing any. All those in favor, uh, Matt, uh, Thomas Mack, for Chair of the West Dakota Water Development Board, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Looks like I'm stuck here for a year. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
It's like the Hotel California.
So the next item is Vice Chairperson. Must be a Director. It is also a one-year term. Uh, the Vice Chair usually assists the Chair when the Chair is out or unable to attend a meeting. Also does, uh, some contact with the admin position in discussion of things. Is there any nominations open for Vice Chair? Yes, Dan?
I had checked with Scott McGregor if he'd be willing to serve. I think he'd be a good choice. He said he would be willing, so I'll nominate Mr. McGregor without any further comments.
Is there a second for Scott McGregor as Vice Chair?
I second.
I'll second.
You, you want Roy? We'll give it to Roy, Craig.
Okay.
Let him. Okay, are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Please. I heard Craig say something. Were you throwing your hat in there, Craig?
No, I, I'm sorry. I coughed. I'm sorry.
No, no worries, no worries.
It's an option.
So, um, all those in favor for Scott McGregor as Vice Chair, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. McGregor. You are now the Vice Chair. Okay, the next item is for Secretary. It must be a Director. It is a one-year term. Uh, you would help the administrator with the notes of the meeting and kind of building up, uh, the minutes that we will probably go over after Item Six. Um, it seems to be a pretty enjoyable position. Um, are there any nominations for Secretary? Yes, Dan?
Well, I twisted Craig Care's arm a little bit, who's on the phone, and he first, uh, seemed a bit reluctant. He's oftentimes, like today, has to be attending by phone, uh, especially in the wintertime. He's in Texas currently, but, yeah, after we talked a bit, uh, he figured he could probably do it remotely in many cases. It's kind of been the, the protocol with Cheryl Rowe, who had been doing the position before, so, uh, sounded like he would probably accept, and I guess I'll forward a nomination for, for Craig Care and see if he will accept it.
Craig, will you accept the Dan's nomination if he, if it is seconded?
Yes, I will.
Okay, is there a second for Craig Care as a Secretary candidate?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mark Klein. Are there anyone else, is there anyone else that is wanting to run for the Secretary position? Nothing. All those in favor of Craig Care as Secretary, by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Moving into the last, uh, uh, last board member, or, excuse me, last officer, which is Treasurer. This may or may not be a Director. It's the only one out of the officers that can be this. Um, is, is for the financing, is there a nomination for Treasurer?
Can we note, does Ron want to do it again?
Ron notified me that he would, willing to do it, and I have the authorization to say Ron is willing to do it, if, if there is a nomination.
I would do it.
Okay.
Nominate Ron Coth for Treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
By Carr and Young. Does anyone else have a nomination for Treasurer? Hearing nothing. I, um, all those in favor for Ron Coth as Treasurer, notified by saying aye.
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 All those, all those opposed, same sign. Okay, Ron Coth is the Treasurer, and that fills out the officers, and I'd like to thank everyone who had volunteered to become an officer. It is a, it is a wonderful experience on the board. Now, that is-
Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Going into, uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the December meeting. Uh, they are in the packet. And I hope everyone had some time to look over them, but I'll give a second to look over them, just in case there were any questions or concerns.
Moved to approve.
Uh, motion by Driscoll, move to approve the minutes as provided in the packet. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Roy. Open for discussion.
I'll just have to stay. I wasn't here to know closer after that.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the December seventeenth meeting, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Now we move to Item Eight. Item Eight is the, Item Eight is the meeting schedule for the year of twenty twenty five. The person that is presenting this is Mack, which seems to be my perennial thing since being on the board. Um, so, meeting schedule is subject to change, but it will be three P M. at the Rapid Valley Sanitary District Facility, which is the location we're in currently. Um, moving forward, so Tuesday, the annual meeting is today, is the first item up there. We'll have a meeting on the eleventh of March, May thirteenth, July eighth. Uh, August twelfth is our budget meeting. October fourteenth is a regular meeting. December ninth is a regular meeting. And because the way our schedule works, uh, we usually add the first meeting of next year, which would be January thirteenth. Um, this sets under the normal confines of how we've been doing the meetings. They'll be at three, same place. Is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Young, seconded by McGregor to approve the meeting schedule. Open for discussion.
This is basically the same schedule. We've always had, just updated dates.
Yep, pretty much. No, nothing changes unless something catastrophic happens, and we moved away after twenty twenty from the every monthly meetings. So, all those in favor of approving of the meeting schedule for twenty twenty five, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just gave, this meeting schedule I provide to the office here, so they put us on the schedule. So I, I want to say it because I may not be here for, well, I won't be here after a while, but, um, we need, if anything changes, make sure they're notified. And furthermore, they won't schedule us for that January twenty sixth meeting, so when we get to the end of the year, somebody needs to-
To go in.
Schedule the room for that.
Thank you for the update, Dan. We're gonna remember that a year from now.
You know, I might.
We just need to make Dan the notary, so that he can shut up. So-
How much in advance are they willing to schedule that?
Um, I don't know. Not sure.
We'll cross that bridge.
If there's any weather-related incidents, I mean, is there a chance of a meeting being canceled due to weather?
Yes.
Okay.
Occasionally, a date will get moved. For our December meeting, we ended up changing a date, but that's easily done if and when it's needed.
If, if that happens, we'll try to notify everybody, but also post on the website so that the public is aware of the change.
Is it usually rescheduled then, or is it just-
Depending on the topic and what, what can work.
Yeah, okay. Typically, we'll just set it for the next week. Okay.
Okay, Item Nine is designate the official newspapers, according to South Dakota law, forty-six A dash three D dash eleven. Uh, currently, our official papers of record we are required to have right now in the county are the Hill City Prevailier, Prevailier, excuse me, and the Wall Current. Is there a motion to approve the official newspapers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we again designate the Hill City and Wall Papers as the official newspapers of the district.
Okay, is there a second? Second, seconded by Mr. Young. Open for discussion.
Are there any newspapers in the Northern Hills area, the Western?
So our, our area is the northern bounty, boundary of Pennington County, and then over down the, uh,
Southern boundary.
Southern boundary.
It's the Cheyenne River west to the county line, just in Pennington County. Okay. How that got set, I have no idea.
So, uh, the motion on the, on the table is to approve the designate the official newspapers as the Hill City Prevailier. I'm gonna get that word right. I, I comment to you guys, Prevailier, and the Wall Current as the legal newspapers for the West Dakota Water Development District. All those in favor?
One question first. We're, we're required to have, not necessarily two, at least one, correct?
At least one, yes.
We could have more, decide, but, uh-
More, we could have, uh, down to one.
Seems like a year or so ago, we decided we could live without the Hill City Journal, and it seems like we're getting I O P.
Yep.
Without him.
And this would be the prevailing newspaper in Hill City?
I believe so.
I'm sure it's at the Koran.
So, as, as written in the motion, all those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passed. The next item is Item Ten, the Treasurer's Report.
Okay. Treasurer's Report, let me get my microphone here. Okay, Dan Malali, currently, our revenue this year, which would be interest and grants, but not, we don't have any interest yet, so the grant is really just from the Watersmart Grant from the Bureau of Recs, and that's forty-six hundred thirty-two dollars. Our Black Hills, our projected tax revenue for this year, which will be twenty twenty-four taxes payable in twenty twenty-five, is expected to be two-hundred-sixty-four thousand, seven-hundred-seventy-five dollars. It usually comes out pretty close to that. They, they don't always hit that exactly, because some people, sometimes we get taxes from the previous year, things like that. We have two accounts, one at Black Hills Community Bank, and our savings account there. Savings and checking are fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-fifty-four dollars. And we also have some checking accounts that were set up to make things convenient for bookkeeping purposes, so. The, um, the one that says B H C V, Black Hills Community Bank, B O R, federal grant is intended to be the seventy-five percent match we get from the federal government for the Pac-Tola Deerfield Study. And we always have to keep a hundred dollars in there, so the, the amount in there is normally gonna be a hundred dollars, and I got an extra penny there because of roundoff problems, but, um, usually, the money that goes in there goes out the same day, so that's just a transient account. Then the next one is the match that we have to provide for that contract. And so that's seventy-eight thousand, eight-hundred-ninety-six dollars. So that will, whenever we get a bill from BAR, I'll take seventy-five percent of that and request that amount from the Bureau of Rec, not the Bureau of Rec actually, but the federal government ASAP site, and then twenty-five percent I'll take out of this other account that we have for the twenty-five percent match, and again, that's gonna be a hundred dollars over what, what is really available. And then the, uh, other accounts are at Raymond James. We have a C D there. Five-point-three-five percent interest at a hundred thirty-eight thousand. And we also have a savings account there because we got a good, uh, interest rate on that, so we decided just to keep that money in savings for now at least. That would be six-hundred-thirty-seven dollars, six-hundred, six-hundred-thirty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-two. Making total funds, nine-hundred-eight, I can't read very well, nine-hundred-six thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars. Um, and then the expenditures, we haven't really done much this year, but, um, the directors and office, a few office supplies, that comes to one-thousand-seventy-nine. Projects to date, mainly the BAR, Pac-Tola Deerfield Study at the very bottom here. Sixty-one, or six-thousand-one-hundred-ninety, I'm sorry, six-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-six, and adding the ex, uh, non-project and project expenditures, we've spent seventy-two-hundred-fifty-five dollars. And I have the twenty-twenty-five budget over there. I won't go into that. But, um, any questions to this point?
Okay, one, the, uh, USGS stream flow gauges we show, oh, that's dispersed in twenty, in twenty-twenty-five, not twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
Okay, so right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're not seeing, there's almost nothing. We're only two weeks into the year. Okay.
Correct.
Yep. Sorry.
Um, so yeah, so what I did there is I, I put down everything that we spend money on plus anything that's in the budget. So the budget doesn't really dictate that we're gonna spend that money. And it doesn't really authorize us spending that money. That money still has to be approved. So the next sheet is the project summary. And it goes sequentially, the newest projects are on the top. And I have a project number system I use. And the first number, the twenty-four, is the year it was approved. The next number is the number that year. So twenty-four underscore zero-zero-one is the first project that was approved in twenty-twenty-four. And the USGS X is just an indicator so you can glance at it and know that that's a USGS project. So off to the far right, it has the balance remaining. And if you add up everything, and so this is all money that's approved by the board. So this is not anything we can count on keeping. If you add up everything that the board has approved, it's six-hundred-forty-four thousand, forty-six dollars. And the next sheet is a timeline of the different projects. So it just gives you a visual presentation of the timeline on the projects. When we do a project, there's usually a date that is approved and then a date that it goes to. And so that's what's reflected on this page here. And that's, unless there are any questions, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, are there any questions for Dan in his presentation?
I guess I've got one. Back to the first of the budget sheets there on page twelve. I see we list an item near the bottom for erosion control work at La Croix Golf Course. And are we missing project for Star Village, both, uh, the Parks Department and Zadik?
Derp above.
Those are the first two. Okay, okay, yep. I mistake again, sorry.
Yeah, and since, since that was approved before twenty-twenty-five, it's not showing up in the project budget line or column.
But there actually are collectively something on the order of around eight thousand dollars available for the two of those.
Um, yeah, if you go to the project sheet, you can see.
Okay.
I actually have those highlighted in green kind of in the middle there.
Okay, yep. Okay, that looks consistent with my thought process. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a mo- motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Director Klein, is there a second?
Second.
By Director Driscoll. Any discussion on the motion? Dan is second to pick it up.
Treasurer's post, you're right.
Yes.
I've been corrected on that, like it's a call. Okay.
All those in favor of approval of the treasurer's report state by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Looks like the motion carries. Okay. Going to item eleven, update on erosion control projects. Looks like that one's yours, Dan.
Okay, and I probably should actually have titled that update on our three nineteen, our EPA section three nineteen for non-point source pollution, uh, reduction, uh, proposal that we've got in the works with D A N R in addition to the erosion control work. But, uh, since we're not voting on anything, I, I think I can cover them both under this. You know, I've given an update on the three nineteen proposal at our December meeting. Since we've got three new directors, you know, go through a little bit of, of that again. And, uh, I guess just as of a couple of days ago, it occurred to me that I probably should send out the actual application that we had sent in to, to D A N R, to, to all of the directors. So, so I did that. The current status is that, uh, basically there is one step left in the approval process on that. And, and that basically was, uh, approval that was required at a December ninth meeting of the South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources. I did sit in on that online and it, it turns out it's, it's basically, uh, pretty much a rubber stamp process. Um, there was, typically, I'm told, there tends not to be any discussion. It, it tends to be pretty straightforward and, and that was the, the case. The, a little bit more on the process, you know, we spent quite a bit of time iterating with Department of Ag and Natural Resources staff in, in preparing the, the proposal. They had actually invited that proposal. And, uh, during fair amount of iterating, there was a certain amount of, uh, moving target there and, and actually write up until the, kind of the end of the process. Each year, they are allocated about two million dollars for, for this kind of work. And usually the requests that they get in are, are just a little bit above two million. And they had thought that would be the case. But, you know, it turned out there was, uh, four million dollars in requests this year. And, and that's above and beyond. Our, our total request to EPA was only two-hundred thousand initially. You know, we'd been looking at, uh, you know, what would have been a million-dollar project. And, um, they kind of became aware that there's gonna be a lot more demand than, uh, they'd anticipated. So they, they had kind of suggested that we pair our, our request back to what it ended up being, uh, a total of two-hundred thousand from D A N R. The, the way the three nineteen process works, uh, you know, the main requirement to qualify is that there has to be a non-federal entity that's, that's willing to put up, uh, forty percent, uh, of the cost share against sixty, forty percent non-federal versus sixty percent from, from EPA. So, you know, actually initially, we were looking at a six-hundred thousand request. And, and West Dakota had committed to, uh, providing up to four-hundred thousand if needed for that work. And, uh, the intent had been that as we moved forward, um, you know, we would be looking for other stakeholders to help us out with the, the non-federal share. But we needed to commit to the, the maximum available. So, uh, at this point, instead of being on the hook for what, uh, we've committed for up to four-hundred thousand, but the, the maximum, uh, that would, we'd be looking at would actually be only a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, so quite a bit less. The, the final step that remains in, in the approval, it, it actually went through, uh, first after working with D A N R on preparing the application, um, it had to go through the Non-Point Source Task Force Committee, uh, meeting in Pier, which was, was, uh, back in December. As part of that process, D A N R first makes the recommendation. And, and they had recommended us for full funding because ours had been pared back quite a bit. And then they had three other projects that were competing for just under two million dollars and four million dollars worth of requests. So, uh, there was quite a bit of trimming went on. But, you know, ours ended up being approved for our full amount. So it went forward to the Board of Water and Natural Resources. And basically now they have the approval to, to submit that to EPA. One potential hiccup, um, back in twenty sixteen, the last, the previous time the Trump administration was, was coming on board. Trump administration had zeroed out the three nineteen funding. That was restored in the congressional budget and ended up coming in about the, the way it had in previous years. And, um, I think there's a reasonable expectation that, uh, um, the funding will survive. But, you know, that, our work is contingent on that. So, you know, if, if we eventually, you know, the budget comes through, the, the, our write-up states a, a start date of September one, twenty-twenty-five is basically is the earliest that they would anticipate that, that the wheels would turn to, you know, move money to us to begin expending funds. And I guess without going through any of the details of the proposal, at this point in time, it's primarily, uh, a planning effort. You know, initially, we were looking at a fair amount of implementation and, you know, at the request of D A N R, paired quite a bit of that out of there. So, um, there's basically five, Rapid Creek is decided into five segments in terms of the, basically, um, the, it, it's the D A N R three oh three program, uh, sampling program. So there is a segment of Rapid Creek basically above Pactola, uh, which we propose no work in. And then segment two is from Pactola to essentially Canyon Lake Dam. And then segment three is from Canyon Lake Dam down through about where we're at here and, and a bit farther. Those two segments will basically have, uh, development of watershed protection plans, uh, as, as a main activity. And, and the reason for that is that there really isn't much in the way of impairment in, in these areas relative to, uh, basically the, the water quality criteria for these segments. So, uh, that was part of the process that EPA recommended that really before we do implementation, we, we do a, a watershed protection plan. So there's an emphasis on that. And then, uh, segments four and five farther downstream, uh, there actually will be a little bit of, uh, implementation there, which is along the lines of what's, uh, more typical, uh, three nineteen projects. One would involve the, the, um, riparian cover initiative or buffer initiative, uh, establishing some riparian buffer areas and, and then also some cover crops, things like that. So kind of some standard things. But, uh, you know, the real thing that, uh, you know, attracted them to, to invite us to work with them is the, the erosion control work that we'd been working on, Star Village. And, you know, Dan is listed here under the information. We also have projects at La Croix Links, uh, Disc Golf, and then out at Raider Park, uh, which is adjacent to Stevens High. And so there's a lot of similar geology around the, you know, through the Rapid City proper, very steep erosive shales and, uh, many, many acres that are contributing, um, you know, basically bare shale straight into the creek. A lot of work that can be done there. And then, uh, there'd been quite a bit of interest, uh, in some stream restoration work, uh, project that, uh, the Black Hills Fly Fishers have been working on up there below Pactola and, uh, potential for additional work there. So that's kind of what's on top, tap. It'd be a, a three-year project. And, um, that's where things stand as of our, our approval by the Board of Water and Natural Resources.
Thank you so much, Dan. Are there any questions for Dan?
Thanks for sending that out so we could review that before me. Appreciate that.
Yeah, probably don't, would be good nighttime reading if you're having trouble sleeping.
Are you having, seeing any success with your?
Well, we, we have definitely done a lot to reduce the sedimentation from, from these areas. You know, I'll talk a little bit more. Well, I, actually, I did a, you know, a tour with Mark and Bill Young, you know, of the Star Village area. And, um, there's about five acres there that's in pretty rough shape. And, you know, we've really done an awful lot to stabilize, stabilize the periphery of that area. You know, most of it's been, uh, actually the, far and away the large majority volunteer efforts. But, uh, there's a severe head cut along the, the upper part of this area that we've really stabilized. And then, uh, we've done a lot, silt fences and some other measures to, you know, retain sediment on site. So, uh, we've had a lot of success. The, the main erosive areas, we, we actually made a decision, you know, about a year ago to kind of hold back on those efforts and see where this three nineteen project would go. Because it, uh, it's gonna involve, uh, really a lot of dump trucks full of, uh, topsoil and dozers to spread them. And, you know, it, uh, you know, that area's been decades getting into that shape. And it won't hurt it to wait another year or two to where we, you know, got some other partners to help us out with the funding.
Anything else? Not hearing anything. Thank you so much, Dan, for that presentation.
Well, and I'm not quite done. That's.
Oh, that was the first part. Okay, I.
That's the three nineteen end of it. I guess, uh, one thing I'd like to, to see us do, the, really now that we know that we've got all the approvals in place, even though the, the project would not start officially until September one, we really need to begin working, uh, more closely with, uh, a number of stakeholders on this project. So, you know, I guess I would like to suggest that, that we should form a, a committee to begin, you know, interacting with some of these entities. You know, we're already working with, uh, you know, the city of Rapid City on our Star Village and La Croix work, our partners at, at Raider Park. You know, we've had preliminary discussions with game and fish and fly fishers on stream restoration work. But there's, uh, you know, a lot of other potential partners there. So I guess I'd like to suggest that we form a committee to where we could, uh, you know, begin going out and interacting with these people and begin to formalize, uh, a stakeholder group. I think if we can have a stakeholder group in place before, you know, our project officially starts, it'll, uh, enable us to hit the ground running.
So are you requesting that the chair form a committee now? Or would you like that kind of for the March meeting and kind of have it float around and have people think for volunteering?
I think we'd be best served just to, you know, form a committee now. And then, uh, I don't think we'll probably do a lot before our March meeting. But, uh, uh, to adjust things if needed. So I guess I'd suggest we, you know, go ahead and appoint a committee now.
Okay. Would there be anybody willing to help Dan, uh, Driscoll on the three nineteen project in formation of the committee? Cannot be more than five members. And due to the current bylaw change, it should be a minimum of three.
I think with our current, uh, makeup, we've got one position vacant. So a quorum is four, so I think we're maxed out at three at this point.
At three.
But I would, I'd like to first suggest that, that Ron Coats should be a part of the committee. I know he's not on the, the phone, but he's been involved, you know, pretty heavily with me and then with Director Birkey and, uh, you know, the formula came into this. So, you know, contingent on his agreeing to, to participate, I think that we would, you know, like to.
Yeah, and that, that's why I suggested about forming a committee in March with Ron here to see if he wanted to join the committee before making it. What was my thought process on it?
I, I think we can count on his participation and if not, we can go to Plan B.
Okay. So it would be you and is there at least one other person possibly interested in joining the committee with Dan to, Bill?
I'm interested.
Okay. So.
Who's that?
Uh, the, um, do you wanna, would you like to be called Bill or William or?
Uh, Bill is better.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Well.
I think that's certainly much worse.
See, I'm the same way with Tom or Thomas, but I know some people it works. So, um, we have a committee of three, cause like we said, a quorum is four. So, um, we have a committee of three, because like we said, a quorum is four. So we'll keep that in mind. And since under my powers as chair, I can appoint a committee, so we can go from there. Okay. Any anything else, or is that?
Well, so then the erosion control end of it, I'd, uh, you know, given a bit of an update there at our December meeting, um, you know, uh, we made a pretty aggressive effort on spreading leaves on both our Star Village and La Croix, uh, Disc Golf areas. They've proven really highly effective at at, uh, repelling rainfall and and keeping these shales in place. Uh, we've used them primarily along the headcut, uh, at Star Village. Our initial efforts there involved putting two rows of wattles very close to the the headcut to kind of catch the materials as it sloughs off. And I guess I experimentally just started dumping yard waste there the the first year. And it kind of amazed me how how much it held things in place. And so, uh, we kind of went into production on that over the course of the years, and it's really made a difference. Um, we've also targeted areas where we've got kind of partial vegetation, uh, trying to heal these areas before they they blow out. So, uh, um, Director Birkey's been involved in a lot of these efforts. Um, I don't know if you want to address what it looks like to you in those areas?
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, it's just amazing, uh, from where we started initially and just trying to, like, and Dan was kind of the leader on this, but just to keep that headcut from moving back up the hill. And so we concentrated right on that headcut with the the wattles. And and we did an area up there, if you had a chance to go out and look at it, it was about a third of an acre that we actually put down blanket, topsoil and then blanket and seed. And that area really.
Really came back.
Really did a nice job. And I think the long-term goal is that you get to that, you know, that same kind of a treatment, uh, for the whole area. But, uh, yeah, it's it's just amazing. And now now you go out there and there's there's actually grass starting to grow in some of those places and other types of vegetation. So yes, it's been, I think it's been very successful.
Well, and Dan may have forgotten by now, but there's quite a few of those headcut areas. We'd, uh, bought a couple of cargo sleds up at Runnings that two of them hold a cubic yard of of material from about, or two of them hold one scoop, uh, about a half a cubic yard, so a quarter in each. And, um, we had obtained about thirty side dumps of of sediment that had been dredged from Canyon Lake there, you know, when we first started this project. One of our directors, Linda Harris, had said, well, maybe we could get some of that stuff. They're trying to get rid of it and use it for topsoil. And so they hauled us in that material in no charge. We'd been a partner on on the dredging. And we actually ended up bringing in a bunch of compost from the landfill and mixing them. And so a lot of those headcut areas, um, it was very labor-intensive. But, you know, we'd we'd basically take those two sleds and, you know, go get a scoop and, you know, split it into two sleds and it's all downhill, you know. It might be fifty, hundred feet down. But we we put a lot of topsoil in a, or dirt in a lot of these places, not really topsoil, seeding it and, you know, it started growing things and then putting the grass on there to kind of mulch it and then putting it in areas with partial vegetation. There's, uh, quite a few areas there that were starting to blow out. And, um, they're no longer blowing out, you know, they're coming up on healing. Uh, so this year, we, you know, had been working well enough that we, you know, tackled La Croix Disc Golf. And there's about a half an acre there. And, um, we ended up stockpiling about eight hundred of these yard waste bags there. It was quite a quite a job getting it spread there. But, you know, that area's been, instead of a total blowout, it's, uh, got a mix of vegetation. Uh, a year ago, we had laced it with wattles, you know, strong wattles about five feet apart, you know, running the length of it. That ended up being a couple thousand feet of wattles in there, uh, pretty good day's work that was. But, uh, uh, it's now completely covered with leaves. If you go by there, it, uh, kind of looks, it's not vegetation, it's hard to tell that. But, you know, I'm pretty optimistic that, uh, you know, it's gonna do. I'm hopeful that over time, it's gonna, it always requires more treatment. Every year, we end up going in there and doing some more of it. But, uh, you know, I'm optimistic that, you know, we'll heal the majority of it in that fashion. So, um, I guess with them, I'd I'd like to request similar on this, that that, uh, it would be good that we would have a a committee. Um, you know, I've been the lead on these things. And a lot of times over the years, uh, you know, Chairman Birkey was kind of my sounding board. A lot of times I've worked with him on should we do this or try that. And, uh, you know, he's really not available anymore. But I'd like to, you know, have a couple other committee members that could could help me in, um, you know, basically deciding what do we try in some of these places, what don't we? You know, I guess from my standpoint, you know, back to the three nineteen end of it, uh, it's basically six months from now that we would have any money. And then we need to go through a a planning process. And we really don't have any implementation planned as part of that work yet. Um, we can modify our our application in the future to bring things in like that if we would want to. But in the short term, you know, I don't think we want to just keep waiting forever until these funds get here. And, you know, I think we'd be better served to, you know, tackle some of these areas, whether it's at Star Village, La Croix, uh, out at Raider Park. We've got some good partners there. And, uh, maybe we look at a couple other small areas. But I guess I'd like to have a couple other committee members to, you know, help decide what we may attempt in some of these places, so.
So you're looking for more of a erosion control committee?
Yep, specific for erosion control efforts.
For the projects that would pertain to, but not limited to Star Village, Raider Park and La Croix.
Right.
Are there any volunteers? I'm assuming you're volunteering yourself as one of the members?
Yep.
I'll volunteer. I've done a lot of stabilization on these shales and stuff. And I've seen stuff that does work. I've seen a lot of stuff that don't work. So, yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay.
I've also, I've also worked on a lot of three nineteen grants too, so.
I was thinking your background might be suitable, so I'm glad you're volunteering.
Hey, anyone else would like to volunteer?
I can help with that.
Okay.
You.
Well, that's, that's fine, Craig. I'll I'll assist if if needed on the projects themselves, but stay off the committee. So I could be labor for you.
Actually, on our little walking tour there, Mark had suggested this Ignite Rapid City might be, uh, you know, a possible source of labor. And then, you know, Bill kind of had some connections there too. And I guess, um, I like ideas like that, you know, I'm, we'll size some things up like that. Anyhow.
I do have a big bag of leaves, I mean, like a tarp on a five-by-ten, uh, trailer, if you want.
Well, we'll, we'll be doing more of this work next fall, but not until then.
I'll send some to the landfill.
So before we move on, there's one more matter I'd like to, uh, address as part of this, since our agenda is, uh, fairly short today. Um, in the past, um, you know, one of the, we've got a lot of volunteers. This this year, I actually, um, tallied up because as we start our three nineteen work, this volunteer work can be in-kind service. And and it qualifies, uh, oh, I think the going rate is something on the order of thirty-three dollars an hour. So I thought, well, I'm just gonna keep track of of how much work we actually, uh, do as part of this. And it said we did about eight hundred bags at, uh, La Croix. And I think we probably ended up doing about seven hundred at at Star Village. It, uh, it added up to a a grand total of two hundred and forty-two man-hours of of effort between, takes a lot of time to gather these leaves, leaf bags, uh, you know. A lot of that is is my effort, but, uh, uh, there there's a handful of other people that have helped me with that. And then when it comes to to spreading them, that's, uh, a pretty big effort. But, uh, some total two hundred and forty-two hours, give or take, of of volunteer efforts. Uh, most of the time, at the end of the year, we we try to do a, we call them a worker appreciation gathering. You know, typically, we'll, uh, try to find a date that works for quite a few of the volunteers and, uh, go out to Kelly's where on Wednesday night you can get a prime rib for fifteen ninety-nine and, uh, uh, maybe a beverage and, uh, tax tip. It usually comes up to about twenty-five dollars, uh, a person. And, uh, you know, try to invite everybody that's that's helped us. And, um, um, I guess, um, the the last time around, I, we had done one small one after, uh, one of our efforts this year, just because it was on a Wednesday. And we said, well, let's go to Kelly's here. And, uh, I guess it ended up that that the check never actually found its way to me. There was some some concern over, uh, whether or not, you know, things like this were in the budget. And I guess the little more background on it, it would have been in in March of twenty twenty-three that we had, the board had officially voted on an agenda item to to approve, uh, an expenditure. I had just gone out and taken the crew out, you know. I said after the fact, well, I really should put in for reimbursement. And so, uh, you know, the board did vote unanimously to reimburse. And then at a a subsequent meeting, I think it was probably in advance, it would have been in September of twenty twenty-three then, that we did a a day of carrying project in there where we got the the National Guard to help us. We, uh, carried in seven thousand feet of wattles in there in the Star Village, which is kind of helping keep the the sediment on the hillside and keeping it from hitting our silt fences that we've got at the lower end of it. So in advance of that, I said, you know, we really should be set up to where we can do this, you know, without voting on it every time. And, you know, in my opinion, it's not any different than buying wattles, buying grass seed, buying silt fencing, buying erosion control materials or blankets, uh, you know, equipment for spreading the the dirt, diesel fuel, et cetera, et cetera. And so I said, you know, I said, maybe we could do this by consensus of the board. And and basically, that was the consensus. So, um, basically, you know, without any need to vote on things, we had funded, it was about four hundred dollars to do lunch for the, uh, the day of carrying crew. And then then we did a couple more. We did a lot of work that, additional work that falls spreading leaves. And and we ended up, you know, doing two of the worker appreciation parties. So, uh, this has kind of been business as usual before. And, you know, we've kind of got a new board here. And I thought, you know, I really don't like to go through the effort of doing this as a voting effort, but I I guess I'd like to see how the board feels about this moving forward.
I would just have one concern. I I deal with, uh, some grants that have to do with, uh, trainings of people. And I know that the state does not allow any expenditures and tax dollars on food and luncheons and and things like that for the these trainings I've been at. And I don't know if there's a law or some provision in the state that would that would, uh, cover that, that, you know, we'd have to be concerned with. But that would be my only concern on that. I wish there was another way that we could do that. I'm all for an appreciation party. I think the people that that volunteers should be recognized in some way. A meal is a very cheap way, considering you're talking about seven seventy-two hundred dollars worth of labor that's been done. But I just don't want to get sideways with any laws, uh, or or state procedures. I just think that should be researched before we make a decision on spending money on on anything food-related. And that's that's just my my opinion.
Do we have anyone that has any knowledge of the legalities there?
I would say the state is very, very, especially with what they were cracking down. I just read an article that they were mad that state employees were taking per diem when there was a muffin provided. So the legalities of the of of providing food or a thank you, we should probably research that for future before we take any movement, just for safety sake of the board. Because it only takes one or two concerned citizens to bring it up, and then it could be in a violation, would be my thoughts on it. I'm not opposed to it, but I think there should be always a, this should be researched further if this is something that we as a board want to do for future endeavors. I know in the last time, it was kind of, we, the last, because I've been on the board as long as you have.
Sure.
That we kind of vokated the one time. But I'd rather make sure that we're above board if we move forward. And if there are any restrictions on what can and cannot be utilized, just for the safety of the board.
Well, I understand that concern. And I guess, uh, our new vice chairman, I'm aware of his professional background, is in the legal arena. I wonder if if we might be able to delve into such matters.
Sure, I'll take a look at it. How how much was the expenditure for the last appreciation party?
Um, so in following our twenty twenty-three efforts, uh, we actually did two of them. One in November and then one was in February. We waited until you kind of get past the holiday season. And one ended up being two hundred and nine dollars and the other was four hundred and twenty dollars. And we had a pretty good turnout on that. And so, um, you know, it's it's probably on the order of ten cents on the dollar what we'd.
Right.
Pay a volunteer, it, uh, pretty nominal. But that's, that's a ballpark. Most of the time, you know, like I say, it's about twenty-five dollars a head. And we might have, just all depends, you know.
I can look into, um, you know, there's a, Thrivant has, uh, thriving grants that anyone who's an investor in Thrivant, uh, funds, uh, up to two hundred and fifty dollars for projects like this that are pretty open as far as how it's spent. And I think a volunteer appreciation, uh, event, um, that I could put in for a thriving grant or find others who would be willing to do that for restoration projects like this. Only one of those can be spent per, uh, event. And so that it wouldn't cover entirely like the four hundred and twenty. But it would definitely reduce the cost if we can get them. They would have to approve that, but, um, I would be willing to put in, uh, to see if we could get a grant for two fifty for an appreciation, uh, deal for the work done.
Should we see what McGregor finds?
Yeah.
First on the legal front and then if need be, I mean, we've, we've got the money and.
Right.
We we've got money to spend. So if we're able to do it without, you know.
Right.
Creating issues, if if not, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, be looking at some other sources to be able to do that. I just don't want us to get sideways on on tax dollars.
Anything else, Dan, or?
That's it.
Thank you for the update. And we'll move on to items.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we name these committees so I have something to put in the minutes?
Um, I had the three nineteen committee for the one with Driscoll, Bill Young and Ron Coath, if he accepts. And then I named the other one on my piece of paper, the erosion control committee, with Driscoll, Roy and Craig. Makes makes it simple.
Vanessa's boucher.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just I'll make sure I can. I just gotta take that still water boy if you don't mind.
That water boy.
I'll just add that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Twenty twenty-four, there was a budget item for worker appreciation parties, but it was never, it's not on the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay.
Just doesn't reference that one there.
Can we add such an item? I kind of looked, I couldn't figure out where it was. I I, you had mentioned that. I, we've always had a, on these project budgets, we have a line item for miscellaneous expenditures.
Yeah, this was on the, our district budget.
Oh, on the district budget?
I believe, yeah, twenty twenty-four. Then I guess we thought it was too controversial and so it wasn't carried over to twenty twenty-five.
Well, we probably just never thought of it. I I tried to look after these details, but I hadn't been aware of it. But would we be able to, should we wait until we, wait until we know the status of things before we add an item? That would make the most sense.
I don't know if it matters whether it's on the budget or not.
It it certainly fits under miscellaneous expenditures.
The budget's already been submitted, but that doesn't mean that it, like, we get projects throughout the year. So I would say, once more information is found about what can and cannot, uh, be done, I bet we can talk. be done, I bet we can talk about that at a later meeting of how to move forward. Okay. Item twelve is the discuss discussion on the transition to Larry Stettler as the new program administrator, looks like Mac, which is me, is discussing. So we have met with Larry for for the transition to admin. We have signed the contract and agreed to it. He is helping Dan out or at least communicating with Dan during this month and the month of February. Our goal is by the month of March that we would kind of have a student-teacher-like action where Larry would be the one sitting where Dan is and Dan is sitting right next to Larry drinking a cup of coffee and just smiling, being glad that he doesn't have to deal with us very much longer. And I know that's just a joke for everybody. Dan has enjoyed working with us and working for us. So
Kind of like Birkie's doing for you right now.
Yeah, I know. I I haven't looked over there.
Smiling and.
Critiquing going.
Yeah, look over your sign over here.
Yeah, I have and I should, but it'd probably be better for everyone involved. But we're we're seeing a good, smooth transition. When we had the executive board meeting, Larry attended and learned how we kind of do that. So we'll have another one before the March meeting. So we feel like Larry is going to be in a good thing. Luckily, School of Mines is, spring break is when our meeting is. So he will be available for that March meeting and then by the May meeting, he will be available for the remainder. So that should be good. Any questions about the transition to our new admin?
That's already been decided. No vote needs to be taken or anything like that.
Uh, contract had been signed in November. So it was done previous, but he would still had a term at the School of Mines teaching. Cool. With that, we can move to item number thirteen, which is chairs comments, which is me. This is kind of odd being the vice chair for about six years to actually be the chair. I have no real comment other than thank you to the new board members. Thank you for the old board members for being here and I hope we have a good year. Item number fourteen is items from the directors. Does the directors have any items to bring to the attention of the board?
Just a question with that. Are those just like random comments for the good of the order?
Kind of, or if you've heard something, let's say you attended the Pennington County Conservation Meeting and you wanted just to say like, hey, I sat in, this is what they talked about. Or if you did a project or saw something in the news like, oh, I hear East Dakota, which is another water development district on the eastern side, did this and I thought that was interesting to bring to the awareness of the board.
Uh, then I've got two quick comments.
Okay.
Uh, the first is I've been sitting in on the meetings with the Black Hills Environmental Coalition. And they're doing some interesting work and they're they're looking for more partnership. And then the second is through the Black Hills Fly Fishers, we've been doing monthly creek cleanups. Our next one will be January twenty-fifth. And on the social media, we are Trout Not Trash on Instagram and on Facebook, we are Cleanup Rapid Creek. And we're going to work on a section of creek. Basically, Saint Patrick Street up towards Campbell on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. Anything else from directors? Just a second.
I've got a couple items, but maybe I'll just first interject, you know, for the board members in case you're you're not aware, kind of an orientation thing, you know, to to vote on any item. If we're actually going to vote on it, we have to have it listed on the agenda specifically as a voting item. And so like this bit about a worker appreciation gathering, you know, I didn't want it to be a a voting item. So I mean, I specifically just put it on there as kind of an update item. But, you know, if there are if there are things that really warrant a certain amount of discussion, whatever, they should be on the agenda. And if there is if there is an intent that we'll vote, it it, you know, has to be pretty specific to to that effect. And so you know, this is a a good opportunity to bring up things like that. And then like Tom just mentioned for me, I did attend the Pennington County Conservation District on the third. And they actually, so other directors, the new ones probably are not aware. We are a partner with the Conservation District on a conservation initiative strategy project, a CIS project that was been on our on our books for a year or more. And actually, they they as of the last meeting, actually have the first applicant who may be looking for funds from the West Dakota would partner on. So there may maybe something actually happened there. I guess I'm glad, Bill, that you're interacting with this, you know, Black Hills Environmental Coalition. Are are you intending to kind of keep attending those? It's nice that we have people with their nose to the wind on things like that. Then one other item. I was invited to sit in on a planning committee for for Earth Day, which this year occurs April twenty-second and, you know, they they do an event each year out at WDTI. And I don't know if that's necessarily a good fit for us or or not. You know, most of the business we do with with other entities, you know, we we probably wouldn't gather a lot of interest there. We'd be there kind of an informational purpose. But I guess I'll I'll sit in on one of these committee meetings and see what all the the implications are. And if if we're interested in actually participate in in a formal fashion, you know, we probably need to, you know, take action on that at our at our March meeting. Thank you, Dan. That's all I've got.
Dan, do you know what day of the week that is? Earth Day this year is always on a Friday or?
It's April twenty-second.
Okay. Tuesday, okay.
Nothing from the directors, items from admin. Think you might be a little bit busy since it started last season.
Yeah.
Uh, the
You have a twenty seconds at Tuesday. Yeah.
The project for the grant for Keystone for the Winter Street Bridge, I talked to a lady today. She said they're going to start tomorrow. Some of this stuff I'm repeating. We have new directors here, but there have been there is a PFAS issue at the National Guard out by the airport now that similar to what Ellsworth is experiencing probably from fire retardant foam with the PFAS in it. South Dakota Association of World Water World Water Systems is meeting in Pierre this week and I might actually drive down tomorrow. I'll get up tomorrow morning to decide. Not going to charge the just district for any mileage or anything, but since I got a free place to stay, I thought maybe just for a road trip, I'd take a trip down there and go to the exhibitions for the free food. The South Dakota Annual Financial Report is due the the end of this month. I there was some talk about having the Smith CPA do it versus me. I'm going to just, seems like by the time I explained it to her, I could probably just do it. So I'll probably just start on it and see what happens. Ten ninety-nines, there was the same discussion. We last year I used Brad Preham CPA. I think I'll just do the same thing this year because he knows our organization and probably be easier just to stick with him. It's it's only a little over two hundred dollars. What else I got here? We have some bylaw and policy updates, which I've put into the document, but I'm going to distribute that to the authors and make sure I got them right before I put those up on the website. And when Larry Stettler comes on, I'm going to have to change a whole bunch of stuff. My name's on a lot of different things with the federal government right now. Like right here, you know, like I'm a very important person. And just for the sake of the new directors, what we usually do with the agenda for meetings is they'll be, I assume we're going to continue having executive board meetings,
Yep.
which will be usually a week before the meeting, the Monday before with the four officers. And so if you have an agenda item, I'll send out an email asking for agenda items. And generally, they end up on the agenda. If there's a problem, somebody will usually hash it out with you as to whether it really belongs on there or not. So that's how that part works. Every every project generally we need the sponsor for. So that's one reason we have the directors submit that. And let me quickly bring up our website here. We archive everything, the meetings, minutes for five years and actually a little bit more. And that'll go on the website. You'll notice some of these don't have pictures. So I'd like maybe everybody check the information on here, click on your email and make sure I got the right emails. And I don't have photos for some of you guys. And I had somebody call me up on on the on Klein here and said, hey, what's Birkie doing on there? I said, well, that's just a generic photo of something I put in as a filler, but it's kind of, I I usually do the, I do the website changes. And it's kind of a hassle, so I don't really want to get in there unless I have everything ready to go.
He's working.
Yeah.
Rare photo.
No, he actually just walked in and struck that pose and then left. So there's a lot of stuff on the website. We try to highlight things we're doing that are current and significant, like the watershed modeling for Pactola. There's different links here. The certificate we got from the Medicine Mountain Scout Ranch, things like that is on is on there. And sometimes we'll post looking for volunteers. I don't know if it's really ever amounted to any people volunteering, but we have a website with all that stuff on, so that's my main point here. And I think that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
If I might add for the benefit of the new directors, you know, the webs, the email addresses that are divided, they don't actually see your email address. There's a link to it, correct?
Um, no, they do now because that, um, I forgot what
The vanity, you called it the vanity.
It did, it just quit working probably.
Well, it doesn't really matter, but I guess the point I was going to make, you might want to consider think about having a web or an email address specific to West Dakota. You know, I I created one for myself separate than my personal email and I I found it over there is pretty convenient to keep it from intermingling with my whatever. Well, I share one with my wife. And anyhow, it's it's made things quite a bit easier for me. Something to think about.
I guess another thing, if somebody calls, I don't give out phone numbers. I'll give out your email. If you want me to give out your phone number, let me know and I can do that. But generally, I unless it's like an emergency or something, I won't do that.
Now, item sixteen, items from the public. If you'd like to address who you are and I'll hand out.
Scott Moore with Green Valley Sanitary District, just here to kind of give you an update of where we're at on our sewer project. Still proceeding with a pressurized sewer system. We passed a resolution to start using the funds that were granted to us on the sheet of papers, kind of what we have to date. And I, we're not going to get any more. If we do, we just got to give money back. So but we've done the DNR five million dollars, we've done all of that. The resolution was pertaining particular to that. We're at thirty-five percent plans currently. Plans will be sent out to all the entities that need to review that in the next week or two. Ninety percent sure that the project's going to go through. The only thing that would stop us at this point is if our cost goes way over our engineer's budget. I just wanted to kind of give you this to let you know where we're at. The new board members, we are, you guys did pledge us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
Are you are you in final design?
We're at thirty-five percent of final design.
I I think that we could, as a as a board, could prove that given the money, could prove for final design.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Member of the public. Yeah, no.
So we need to get on your next agenda.
I would assume that would be probably the best practice with kind of a proposal just to show where where we're at. And since it's kind of because I read over the memorandum of understanding and it was once they had met that the hundred and twenty-five could be submitted. And so looking at it, having a formal request of showing that you guys are at that point would be then a request to release the funds. And I don't really think that it's not a two-vote item because it's already approved. It'd just be to authorize the
Just for the new board members, we as a board, our policy was that we didn't fund preliminary engineering costs for a project because if for that reason, it might not go.
Right.
But if 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 the project is moving forward and we're starting working on final design, you know, it's kind of our thought process that we could give you the money. That's that's the only reason.
So you vote to reserve those funds until the point at which that project is a go?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you look at the budget sheet, if you look at the way bottom, the hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's been that limited. And that official vote didn't happen until December eighth of two thousand and twenty. And I came on the board in March of two thousand and nineteen and that was when this project was first even brought up, just to give you a whole long of a transition.
It it didn't continue into twenty-five, though. I'm just a little worried that it's ended already. We're too late.
So it sounds like you do expect some cost overruns by the time?
We don't know at this point. And the project approval is totally contingent upon our engine, our contractor's estimates when we let it out for bid. Then we'll really closely look at it. We've looked at everything, all the aspects of the pressurized system. We're a little over ten million dollars in engineers' estimates for that versus a twenty-five million dollars for a gravity system. And that's why we're going pressurized. Our grant package percentage-wise versus the, I mean, was pretty dang good. I mean, we're almost seventy-five percent loan forgiveness and grant, which is kind of unheard of for a project like this. So the state said that they're not pushing this, but I go, well, your your grant pack package pretty much showed that you are pushing it, but by giving us the amount of funds that they did. Like I said before, the only thing that really is going to hold us up at this point is if we have an extreme cost overrun over the engineer's estimates.
We did get final membership approval.
From the board?
My recollection is the last time you were here, there was some membership vote that was pending on whether you were going to move forward with it?
Well, the board, the board can move forward without a public vote. And as long as the cost stays within our parameters per per member or individual homeowner. Um, as long as it stays within that parameter, we're going to move forward with it. Um, there's a few people, I call them the lynch mob, that show up every week complaining about it, but. There's nothing to complain about until we get a final number, so that's where we're moving forward.
Now, keep them at your meetings.
Yes.
Well, Scott, do you have an estimate for what the assessment's going to be?
Yes, the loan, the loan amount is on here, um, little under three million dollars. We're looking at thirty-five dollars in assessment, but they also want us to do a uh. Pump maintenance program, so we'll be charging a fee for that um through the sewer bill. And then there'll be the the sewer bill on top of that. Everybody's opinion of what a affordable number is is a little bit different. Um. My my personal feeling is is if it's under a hundred and fifty bucks all in. Um, initially, when this was set out in nineteen, that the dollar amount was a hundred dollars a month. But we've had so much inflation since then, I don't think that's a reasonable request to try and stay at the hundred bucks. So I'll kind of look at what the cost of a, cost of living increases have been since then. And that would be the number that I think the board would feel comfortable with moving forward with.
Are they going to be required to hook into this?
It's a hundred percent required for everybody. That's part of our grant requirement is we have to have a hundred percent participation of hookup. So we're going to have a battle with a few, a few people.
I I know a lot of them.
Anything else, Scott?
No, if you, I.
Thanks for the update.
Anybody else has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It, depending on where things land, it's premature now, but it wouldn't be beyond reason to. See if West Dakota could contribute more than the amount we've currently committed to, you know.
As long as we stay on the the engineer's budget, I think that's, we're we're good. Um, if it, if we do end up going over that, we're going to probably circle back around to everybody and see if we can ask for more at that point.
And it sounds like you'll probably come to us with an agenda item here soon, but it. You know, these updates are good, and if you submit agenda items to just give us an update, you know, no need for votes. That way you don't have to wait till the very end.
Oh, yeah.
If you're on the agenda, you can simply put down at the beginning. You know, a lot, a lot of the. Public boards like ours um actually have their public input at the beginnings for reasons like that. I think maybe the reason we do things different is that, you know, anything that's on our agenda, we typically do allow public input. Public wants to comment, and so anyway. It's nice to hear that this project's actually moving forward. It's been on the books a long time.
Um, I don't know, just a general question, has there been any sampling in the creek to kind of quantify?
There's.
This problem, and then as a comparison, if you put this in, it would be interesting to see what it does to that number.
There there's been some some sampling done with some studies, but they're all fairly old. Um, there hasn't been anything recent. Since, I think, oh, four was the last time it was done. Um, I'm just guessing on that study, that was one that the School of Mines conducted. The biggest complaint that we've had is people saying that their septic systems aren't failing, and I've had to. I install septic systems. Um, the definition of a failing system is one that the water table. And the drain field were within four feet of each other, and a lot of people, there's no way to prove that unless you dig it up and. And have a monitoring well by each septic system, so. I've been reiterating that to the people that are saying that theirs is working fine. The definition. By the state of a failing system and the homeowner's side definition of a failing system are two completely different things.
So what about a mound system? What's the criteria for that?
Well, it's still the four-foot separation, but they put it basically at ground level instead of in the ground, so they can get the separation. And then mound systems, a vast majority of it's evaporatory instead of percolation.
Requires a bigger, much bigger area.
Bigger footprint.
Yep.
Do you have anything, Dan, since you are not public?
I'd just like to congratulate the new board members. Thank you for stepping up, and it's a, it's a fun job. Much well, much needed, it's a great area, so congratulations.
If nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting.
Dan, don't spend my check home on the spot. Thanks, Greg.
Thanks for the advice.
Would you have Dan call me later, and while he called me?
Yep.
As I say, it's going to be a lot easier now that we have two Dans going off the board.
Exactly, exactly.
Which Dan are we talking about here?
They're always blaming me for everything.
There's a couple.
Probably still will.
Stayed water plans, if somebody wants one. Um, did everybody get the West Dakota Regional Water System new layer?
No.
No.
Love to have one.
You want one, Dan?
I've got one.
I would like one.
He's still on the mailing list. So Dan, here's a question I asked Dan Driscoll, is what does PELT stand for?
What is what?
PELT, P L T, it's part of like three nineteen bingo acronym for something.
I don't know.
It's a testing thing, but.
You'd have to inquire through D A N R, it's just an acronym for a software they use, and it's.
Yeah, I don't know.
All right.